Good evening. I'd like to call to order the June 17, 2025 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Could we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't have any chairman announcements tonight. We'll move forward. Next item, item four. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on anything that's not currently on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Item five, the Douglas Common Preservation Society gazebo discussion, possible votes.
Maybe have the ladies here.
Good evening.
Good evening to you.
Lynn Bureski from the Douglas Common Preservation Society.
Bonnie Lepage from the Douglas Common Preservation Society.
Come on in.
So I think all of you have in your packet what we're here to talk about tonight, and that is the two projects for the gazebo at the common. Just a little bit of history. I don't know if everybody who might be listening in is aware, but the gazebo was built in 1996. And during, since that time, there's been not very much maintenance done to that. It was built by the Baloo family and friends of the Baloo family, and it was donated to the town. And I believe it was painted once eight years ago. And I'm not sure about anything prior to that, but as far as structural maintenance is involved, nothing that I'm aware of at all. So what we would like to do, our nonprofit organization, is to provide some service to the town by taking on two different projects. The first one is the structural repair. We talked about this very briefly at one of the previous board meetings, and I believe it was Mike that called it to our attention, that we actually needed to address the post, which is a weight-bearing post, before it could be painted. So we did our due diligence, and we went out and we invited bids, both for the post repair and for the actual painting project. And I have in your packet tonight the scope of work for each of the projects, and the quote that we would like to accept, the expense that goes along with it. And all the expenses on this would be paid by us. There would be absolutely no expense to the town. So this is kind of a no-brainer in terms of the benefit to the town. So we're looking for approval to proceed with both of these. Both of them have provided their certificates of liability insurance, naming the town as additional insured, and both have agreed to go along with the scope of work. Glenn Baloo is with Build It All, and he's got the family interest of the common. It's kind of the legacy of the Baloo family. So he is really committed to making sure that it's repaired in the best possible way. We've done a lot of work around our house with Glenn, and he is absolutely fantastic. Does real quality work, and he knows how to go about everything. I can't think of anyone who's better or more qualified to take on the job. And he pretty much, as a favor to the town, is making room on his schedule so he can fit it in the very tight timeline. So he has, in the scope of work, promised to get it done by mid-July, which is pretty amazing. And the price for that is $3,750. And it does, as you can see in the scope of work, it does involve buying a one-piece post. There are other ways of doing it, but to keep up the integrity, to match everything that way it was done previously, he would do that. And then the same solid mahogany boards for the decking that need to be replaced. Then for the painting portion, the quote that we want to accept is from Jason Baker. He also, he came with really good references. We did due diligence. We went ahead and contacted the names of the individuals who he provided to us, one of which was Adam Burno. So I learned from Adam that Jason's actually done a lot of work for the town previously. So he's somebody that you're familiar with. And I think he's going to do a good job for us. And his quote was for $2,100. So I am looking for approval from the board.
Did anybody get the email that was sent out from the town administrator?
I didn't get a chance. I didn't get a chance. Yeah, I was in flight. Sorry.
It's just a process.
Yep.
Because it's town-owned property, the town administrator is in charge of handing out, assigning contracts. We can't just have anybody sign it, but allow the town administrator to explain it if he cares.
Go ahead.
Does it work?
There's a switch on top.
Something. You've got to feed the elf. No, so I kind of think it's a, a vote is necessary because I think the board, this is a high-visibility property, and the board should have authorized the repairs. And I think that gives people the authority to proceed. The actual procurements, I can't delegate procurement authority to someone who's not a town employee for town property, so I've got to manage it. By way of explanation, construction services under $10,000 don't even require quotes. So you went above and beyond by doing some research and getting some competition and a discussion. So sound business judgment is the only rule that is necessary under $10,000. So being able to justify the process you went through during normal, standard business practices. So for the most part, procurement doesn't really apply. It's just a standard course of business that I sign all contracts for the town, even for the enterprise funds I send contracts. The concern is, please don't shoot the messenger. I swore an oath that I would uphold the law as they're written, and that's what I have to do. In Massachusetts, prevailing wage is applicable to all public construction projects, regardless of dollar value.
Does that apply when it's the owner doing it and that there are no employees?
So if someone is a sole proprietorship, that does not apply.
Both of these are.
No, they're not. So the insurance policy isn't even in Mr. Baloo's name. It's in the name of a business that's an LLC, a limited liability corporation.
Yes, he's a partner in that.
So he's a partner in the LLC, but that doesn't make him a sole proprietorship. It makes him, he's a corporate entity.
Yep.
So whether he did or did not bid prevailing wage, I have to pull the prevailing wage data from the Department of Labor and provide that to him so that he can fill it out, apply the appropriate wage rate. And your price might go up, so that's a consideration. Or it might not. He may have assumed it and put it into his bed. He won't know until you ask him. The painter, I'm not sure. We've done business with this gentleman before, and I don't think he's a sole proprietor.
He is.
He is. So he did that whole painting project by himself? Then he's fine.
Yeah.
On different projects. Who did the post office? It wasn't Baker. It was, no.
Oh.
So you're all right. Baker's done really good work for us, so I'm fine with it. If he's a sole proprietorship, doesn't apply. So that people understand the way this is, the regulatory scheme in Massachusetts, you have a right to subsist, right? So you can work for yourself. As long as you don't have other people working for you, you're not subject to this law. But as soon as you are involved in any sort of business entity that has an identity other than yourself, so you form a corporate person, then you're a subject to prevailing wage. So whether that changes or not, and I can, I can speak to this person for you, I can speak to Mr. Baloo for you if you need it to be explained.
I can explain that to him.
Yeah. There's really nothing I can do about it.
If the LLC has one member, isn't that same as a sole proprietorship?
No.
Legally, it's.
No. So lots of people try to escape prevailing wage, and I understand the sentiment. However, it is a watertight statute and set of regulations. You cannot escape it as a public entity working on buildings. You just simply cannot, unless you are absolutely the guy doing business as himself, throwing a ladder on the back of his pickup truck, doing the actual work yourself with absolutely nobody there. No helpers, no, nothing. An LLC, so as I mentioned, the insurance policy is taken out under the name of the LLC, and there are other partners named for the LLC as the managing partners of Mr. Opies, or whatever. So it doesn't escape. Like I said, I don't know what the impact would be. I don't know how many hours of labor you're talking about, so it may not really be that much. It all depends what they, what they bid you compared to the prevailing wage for that job category under the spec sheets from Department of Labor. It may actually be comparable. So before we jump to conclusions, we just have to do the research. I pull these sheets all the time. Takes about four or five hours for the Department of Labor to respond to me, and we can have a conversation.
Okay. So what does he need to provide to you?
A breakout of labor versus materials, and what rate he was estimating he would use for labor. We'll compare that to the prevailing wage. It's rare, but sometimes people are pleasantly surprised.
It may be higher than what?
Exactly.
Prevailing wage.
So a skilled tradesman might actually be charging a good deal more than the prevailing wage. You just, you don't know until you get all the facts in.
Okay. So it's a breakdown of labor versus materials.
The other thing that he'll need, and the town always waives the fee, any pound projects require a permit, so they'll have to pull a permit.
I was, I was going to ask if we needed a permit.
We always waive the fee.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a structural repair, so again, you're all one.
I got it, Mike.
Yep.
So Matt, are you looking for the board's authority to grant to you to move forward?
I'm taking a belt and suspenders approach on this. I think I can do it on my own authority. But when it comes to these high-visibility town properties, I think the select board should take a position.
I would move that we approve the project as presented to the board for the improvement and delegate to the town administrator to make sure that all applicable state and local regulations are followed. And just to add, it's hard to think of any other organization that's done more for the feeling of being in a community like Douglas than, than these folks. So we should need to, and we have in the past, bend over backwards to support them. Saves the town, the town a hell of a lot of money, and comes up with some wonderful events. And so my motion is to support, support the organization and just delegate to the town administrator to make sure that follows all local and state.
Before anybody seconds, so that you have the chance to change your motion, the select board has already appointed me to be the chief procurement officer of the town, so you don't need to delegate that.
Okay.
It's just a vote in support.
In support of the project. Yeah. So, all right. We got a motion by Hal. Will he hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think, just as a comment, Glenn is definitely one of the top notch.
Top notch, absolutely.
Who's built my house, and I have a set of stairs going through my basement that I'd be proud to put on my first floor. That's how they work.
He's really incredible.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, as this is the first time in what, 30 years that the town commons being, you know, updated or addressed and stuff like that, it's just a new process. And so.
Yes, I wasn't.
No, it's all good.
Wasn't sure about that at all.
It's been excellent. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
I would like to make the comment that this is only, are paying for projects like this. It's only possible because of our fundraising efforts, the generosity and the support from residents in the town and businesses in the town. Just wonderful.
Excellent.
And they make it possible.
Perfect.
So all of us, it's not just us, but the town residents are looking to, to help the town and serve the town in this way.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Nice seeing you.
And I'd just point out, Lynn did come by to see me, and I was in an absolutely dreadful meeting. I would rather have talked to you all afternoon than be stuck in that board meeting. But unfortunately, the town had about a million dollars on the table at that meeting, and I couldn't abandon it. So I missed you, and we probably could have had this conversation in the seats. But we just left this. This is good enough.
So all I do is I talk to Glenn and turn the rest over to you.
Yeah. I'll pull the sheets tomorrow, and we'll have a conversation.
Okay. So what I'll do is I'll provide you with Glenn's cell number so that you can.
Perfect.
Yep.
Wonderful.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Okay. Moving forward, we got the fire department, C E M P, and hazardous migration plan.
Good evening. Kelly Manning, deputy fire chief, emergency management director. Thanks for taking the time for me to give you a quick update on a couple of plans that we've been working on. I will talk about SEP first. So that stands for Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, and that's essentially a plan that talks about how the community will respond to, mitigate, and recover from emergencies. Unfortunately, the TA and I have a little bit more work to do on it. We were hoping to have it buttoned up by this meeting, so we're going to just table it for now and hopefully get it on a, a future agenda here shortly. Do you have anything else to add regarding that?
No, I'll reiterate something I said at the last select board meeting, which is that, from my perspective, this plan must reflect what the town of Douglas would actually do in its context to respond to significant events. And I think there's a lot of good material in the SEP, but I think some of the management models that are applicable to larger communities don't apply in our instance. And I just want to work that out with our, all of our first responders in our highway department to make sure we understand that we're in a unique situation. We run very tight with fairly low staffing numbers. So when we get ourselves into major incidents, the people with the skills are solving the problem. And the management of the overall scope of the issue is out of the ability, it can't be both incident command and E O C manager at the same time. So we have to think through how we would actually prepare for an event that is imminent, but we have time to think about versus something happens suddenly, and it's just a conversation. This plan must reflect us and what we will do, so that in the event that someone isn't here or is unable to attend, is out on leave, whatever, that they can pick up the plan and say, this is what I will do in my role in the town of Douglas. It's already been thought about, rather than referring it to more general models under FEMA systems, which are all good. But we modify them and utilize those authorities and systems that are most applicable to our small town and not larger communities. But that's, I think we'll get there. I have a lot of notes in the draft, and we'll go over them the right time.
Yeah, I've, I've been fortunate to do a few of these in the private sector for disaster recovery and business continuity. And one of the lessons learned is always looking at similar organizations or similar towns to what yours is and looking at their plan and seeing some lessons learned or things that you can pull over. And then, you know, it gets into, you know, your testing and stuff like that and verification and those trial runs. So it's definitely worthwhile. So I do appreciate you guys updating the plan and keeping it going forward and vetting it is the key.
Yeah, 100%. And then continuing the train. So along those lines, another plan that we're updating is our hazard mitigation plan. And the last version of that plan was from 2016. And I'll just give a brief summary for those maybe at home or watching on YouTube, what this plan actually entails and why it's important to us. So it's a document that basically helps us better understand the natural hazards that could impact our community, like flooding, winter storms, hurricanes, even tornadoes, hopefully. Hopefully not, but looks at the risks all these hazards poses, lays out some practical strategies and ways that we can reduce the, the impact of, of these issues. And most importantly, once the plan's formally adopted by the Board of Selectmen, it gives us eligibility for grant funding and other funding to actually implement the mitigation strategies that we have in the plan. So that's, that's a really good, good thing. So in your packet is a quick memo that kind of goes through the timeline. We're approaching the end of the performance period for the grant, which will end in December of 2025. So as we move through the summer, you guys will see a draft version of the plan come across your desk probably around mid-August, in which you guys will be able to make a, make some comments. And then it'll go to a public comment period and a workshop, and then hopefully submitted, not hopefully, it will be submitted to M E M A in September, and then FEMA, and then it will come back to us as approved pending adoption. And then your board will formally adopt it. And once that's happened, we'll be, we'll be in good shape. And I think it's important that I mention that there is no requirement to implement any of the mitigation actions.
Yep.
The plan's just for us to continue to prioritize some of those mitigation actions, and then just in general, be, be more prepared and thoughtful about things we're doing in the community. And that can be as simple as just education. So.
Sounds good. All right.
Any questions?
No, I think you've pretty well covered it, and look forward to seeing the draft and go forward. Thank you for your time, Kelly.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right. Next on the agenda is master plan committee update. Mr. Preston. Good evening. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I have some notes I'd like to use. Make it a little more succinct. Hey, Bob. What are you hiding?
It's good to see you.
Nice to see you.
He does invite himself. So, you know.
We welcomed you up.
Walk my path.
Everything has to do with economic development.
Yeah.
Lisa said I was invited.
Oh, it's Lisa's fault. This guy was a big help.
All the emails I got said I was invited.
So you would ask for an update?
Sure.
Let's see here. So what I did was, I'm going to give you an update, but a little bit of an overview for, for people at home. The creation of a 20-year master plan is a two-year process that can be divided into two parts. First, planning and data collection, and second, writing the document itself. We are currently halfway through this process, having completed the planning and data collection, which included a town-wide survey, where we had over 900 respondents. I think it was the second largest in Worcester County. Community open house, which was held in the gymnasium, tour of town facilities and departments, including interviews with department heads, and a forum with high school students, including a student survey. And we had some very interesting responses from the students, very sophisticated comments. So, and expanded committee discussions. We have some very interesting, unlike most committees, I think, a master plan, we tried to set up an environment, so we have some really interesting expansive discussions. I know Ross can attest to that. And that's where the ideas come in, and that's what makes it unique. Let's see. All the data collected from the community informs us how the town views itself today and how the community envisions the town's future 20 years from now. The areas or elements explored are housing, town services and facilities, economic development, open space and recreation, land use and zoning, transportation and circulation, and cultural and historic resources. Once all the data is collected, the committee and CMRPC representatives start phase two, writing the master plan, which we've begun. To date, we have completed the vision statement, a one-page description of the town today, and as envisioned in the future. And it was one page. I think it took us a couple meetings to get through it. It's good. I mean, I often use the statement that, what is it, a camel is the horse designed by committee? Trying to have 13 people decide on a vision statement was challenging, but I think we got there. Let's see here. Let's, we'll also be reviewing key findings and collected data in preparation for writing the housing chapter at our next meeting. So we're starting writing the first chapter with CMRPC. The master plan should be completed for submission to both the selectmen and planning board by June 2026. So with that, I want to pass it off to Bob, if you feel comfortable with that. Bob could speak better to the grant and to our quarterly submissions.
Yeah, I'm basically involved in the quarterly reports and the monthly reimbursement reports. Right now, we've used the town's $30,000 that's been expended. We're working on a $115,000 grant, of which we've expended $28,000. So we're about 22% there financially. That's all I've got to say on the grants, on the financial portion of the.
You speak, what's the money actually being used for from the grants? Paid consultant or?
CMRPC is the, we're obviously a volunteer committee. It's CM, CMRPC is our consultant.
We're not getting paid.
So.
What?
It's in the back. Hooked in again.
So we have a $115,000 grant, if I'm not mistaken, from the state.
Yeah.
From the state. But they make us, you know, dance for our dinner. We have to let them know what we're doing. And $30,000 from the town, $145,000 total, which will cover all the expenses.
Making a lot of progress.
Yeah, that's good. Is, is the committee writing each section or reviewing?
We write it with CMRPC.
CMRPC, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
CMRPC takes the data, massages it, gives us a draft, then we further massage it.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. Well, next year, you guys will be done, which is, you know, I mean, it's, it's been over 20-something years, I think.
It's every 20 years.
Yeah, but we were over that line. We were.
1998.
We were way behind.
So we're 27 years out.
Yeah. So much, much overdue. All right. That's all I got. Any other comments?
What? For those who are interested in any of the data, if you go to the community development homepage, you go to master plan, you can see the survey results. There's some very colorful comments in there, whichever you find interesting, and all the other data is there also.
Cool. Yeah, I've seen a few meetings. They've been really good, good interaction. So appreciate your time.
We actually have a fun time.
We do. Maybe, maybe too much fun. It's good.
Good deal.
Thanks for your work.
Thanks. Yeah.
Yeah, I could have said one, too.
Okay. All right. Appreciate your time. Next.
Great. Thank you.
There.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Could you move 16 out of order, as I see Chief Motmaney is here, and I think he's respectful of his time.
Sure. We'll move number 16 up. The Blackstone opioid task force and possible votes.
Thank you for, for receiving me. I just came from Blackstone's Board of Selectmen meeting. I got done there early, and I shot up here.
Would you like a cup of coffee?
He needs a cup of coffee.
So.
Good call.
So thanks for having me. I'm here to talk to you about the Blackstone Valley opioid task force. And I know the manager is well aware of, of what it's doing, but I want to give you a brief understanding of what we're doing and what we're asking for support for today. The Blackstone Valley opioid task force started in 2019 as a collaborative between the Worcester County Sheriff's Office and the Usbridge Police Department. Our goal was to simply integrate the resources in the region to try to better help with, with the opioid issue. And we also wanted to incorporate local law enforcement into that area to help people rather than simply try to arrest our way out of the situation. We operated for several years with individuals with lived experience, individuals who are in the industry, law enforcement personnel, and we just gathered everybody together and tried to work out how we could help. For several years, we operated without any funding whatsoever. But then, in '21 and '22, the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office sued the opioid manufacturers and distributors for millions and millions of dollars, and they eventually ended up coming to a settlement, and the number was approximately $930 million. That's what they would pay the state. The state then proceeded to give 40% of that money to municipalities. And all the municipalities in this region got some. So the Blackstone Valley opioid task force found itself in an enviable position. We were in a position to actually know how to use that money, and everybody else was just looking around going, what do we do next, right? So what we did is, if I can turn the page, the, the opioid task force funding goes to each town over the course of like 17 or 18 years. Started in '22, I believe, '23 perhaps, this manager, and every year you get a certain amount of money for the next 17, 18 years. The money has to be spent in certain areas. Opioid use disorder treatment. Opioid use disorder treatment, connection to care, harm reduction, supporting people in treatment and recovery, supporting pregnant or parenting women and families, and prevention of misuse of opioids, and addressing the needs of the criminally justice-involved individuals. So it has to be spent in certain areas as outlined by the state. So we spent months at the opioid task force trying to figure out how to best utilize this money, and in the end, we came down to three core initiatives we wanted to tackle. One is education, we want to go into the schools and teach, and also things such as recovery coaches, and things of that nature. We want to build the pride transportation to those individuals who are simply not getting treatment because they can't get there. So, you know, it's an easy thing to do as well. And lastly, we wanted to concentrate on juvenile services, which are practically non-existent in the Blackstone Valley. So if anybody is in need in the Blackstone Valley, a child in need in the Blackstone Valley, they have to go to Worcester or Boston. And what that means is a lengthy ride out there every day for treatment. And our hope is that we could bring some of that treatment for juveniles, both addiction services and mental illness, which often travels in pairs, to this region. So we are asking each of the supporting towns to contribute $2 per capita, and we're going to pool those resources in order to provide those services I just discussed. Now, I've been in contact with the manager, and I'm sure you've all heard the request to join in our group. So so far, who has joined is Blackstone, Uxbridge, Douglas, Mendon, Northbridge, and Sutton have all agreed to join forces in this initiative. They all found themselves in the same position. They have to spend the money in these certain regions, and how exactly do we do that? So we decided to ask the towns for $2 per capita, and then we realized that there was a grant available for just what we were trying to accomplish. So the state made a grant available to regional partners trying to address the opioid problem. And so we applied for it and received $130,000, matching funds. So the $2 per capita was simply to build up a match. And I was just notified by that organization that we are eligible now for the full 100% of that. So they're going to give us the whole amount. And so we're going to end up with some $230,000, $40,000 in a pot to try to address this opioid issue. And we realized that with this kind of money in play and doing what we're trying to do on a regional basis, we're probably going to need an intermunicipal agreement between all the towns, you know, so everybody understands what the plan is. And so I crafted an intermunicipal agreement, and then I sent it to PK Law, who's our legal provider in Uxbridge, and had them review it, make some corrections, and so on and so forth. And then I sent it out to each of the town managers and town administrators of the towns I just mentioned to review. And the intermunicipal agreement by law requires that it be approved by this group. So the select board, or whatever the ruling party is in any town, has to approve any intermunicipal agreement. So I'm here today to ask you to agree to that document. And in essence, all the document does is memorialize the agreement that we just talked about. It has been reviewed, and the agreement calls for no taxpayer dollars. We're not asking for a penny of taxpayer dollars. If a town does not have enough money in opioid settlement funding to accomplish $2 per capita, we'll take whatever you got. So if you fall short, and I have to say Douglas is not in a position where they're going to fall short. Douglas makes a lot more per year than $2 per capita, but there are some towns that do not. For example, Millville cannot accomplish $2 per capita. They offered like $3,500 from the state, and they refused it because it was too difficult to manage. So they didn't take any money. Blackstone is right at that number. So Blackstone has enough in the opioid settlement funding to accomplish about $2 per capita, but that's about it. So what we decided as a group is, if a town fell short, if they were underwater, so to speak, we're just going to take whatever they have, and we'll call it a day. It is a three-year agreement, and you can back out anytime you want with 60 days' advance notice. And our plan is to create a governance committee, of which each town will have a seat on that governance committee, so you can actually have some input as to where that money goes. My suggestion to you, however, is that what we really need to do is let the industry experts tell us what to do with that money. So what we've got, we have a resident of Douglas who lost a child. He comes to our meetings, every meeting, and has valuable input from a perspective that I don't have. We have individuals who are in recovery, and when I say in recovery, I'm talking 10-plus years, who know where the gaps in the coverage are. They know why people don't get the treatment, and, you know, you can't simply walk into an ER at 2:00 in the morning and say, "I need help," and have the ER say, "Come back at 9:00." That doesn't work. That's not the way the game is played, and they understand that much better than I could ever understand. So we typically take their advice. When we decided to do an educational component, the first thing I did was reach out to the educational community. I reached out to the academics, and they're going to hold a regional meeting of all the towns I just discussed to decide what the curriculum should be in our schools, and we're offering it to them for free. We're going to fund it, it isn't going to cost you a penny. All we're looking for is your expertise and the time to teach your children. So that's what we're at. We're asking for your support for the intermunicipal agreement, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
So if I'm a Douglas resident with an addiction problem or relative, what services are they likely to access? You mentioned transportation.
Yeah.
Any counseling, or?
Well, transportation to the counseling. So one of the things we found is that there's a lot of counseling available, but if you can't get to it, you can't get to it. And so what we hope to do is provide a certain amount of money to provide for transportation for somebody who simply can't get the treatment. If you're a juvenile, we plan to bring treatment to you. So we have an organization called Choices out of Worcester, who works exclusively with children. As a matter of fact, they work with your school board now, with students who have been suspended from school. They take those students in. But after speaking to the manager of that program, he'd like to bring services to the Blackstone region so that we don't have to go out to Worcester every time we've got a child that's in need. There is no place that offers that service, so we plan to offer that. The other thing we plan to do is offer educational services. For example, we would like to hold another class for recovery coaches. So what we'd do is, we'd open it up as an educational opportunity for anybody interested. Typically, it's somebody who has experience in this field. They either have lived through it, or have had a child go through it, or something like that. And it costs about $1,200, $1,300 per student to go through that class. We're going to offer it for free. I'll offer, you know, a public space for zero cost. We'll provide the instructors, and we'll have 25, 35 new recovery coaches at the end of like six or eight weeks. And I just don't see how we can go wrong, you know, bringing those kind of resources right here to the Blackstone Valley.
How about rehab services? Do you pay any of that?
No, we don't pay any of that, and the reason we don't pay any of that is because it is extraordinarily expensive. And we don't want to let insurance off the hook. So what's been happening is insurance companies will pay less and less and less of inpatient treatment. They're trying to get you to do two days of outpatient treatment and call it a day. Well, what we've seen is that just doesn't work, and so now the industry is changing. Even those under state aid get inpatient treatment now, and it's important to make sure that that flow of money keeps going. If we were to pay for an individual's treatment, 60 days, say, for example?
The whole.
$80,000?
Yeah.
$85,000? So if we did that, I fear we would drain our resources so quickly, we would only be able to do two or three people. But if I could get 50 people in the Blackstone Valley to their treatments for 10 grand, that's not a bad deal, you know, if it's successful. We toyed with the idea of using like an Uber service, and it turns out that's a viable option if you're in Boston or in Worcester.
Not in Douglas.
Not in Douglas, yeah. Right? So what ends up happening is either you cannot get an Uber, or they just don't show. They just don't show. So I went to the state and asked, you know, what do I do here? And they gave me a list of providers who do transportation in the region. There's one in Milford called Marx, and they're a big organization, they do a lot of transportation. I called them, and they said, "We only do student transport, we're not interested in anything else." So I finally found an organization that does any kind of transport, and they're willing to negotiate price and give us kind of a group rate. So we might end up doing something like that. The other option, of course, is to buy a van and a driver, which I'd rather not do that. I don't want to be involved in having the hiring and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, one of the benefits of having this opioid task force is I have people who understand the game, and I know when we're being played and when we're not being played. You know, if someone claims they want the service, and then it shows up and stuff like that, I don't want to be the person to cut them off. I'd rather the group who has expertise in this tell me when to cut somebody off. The same goes, is true for, if you want to get into our recovery class, what's your definition of recovery? Have you been clean for a week and a half, a month and a half, six and a half years? The police department doesn't want to be involved in making that decision. I'd rather have the opioid task force make that decision because they know what recovery is and who's playing the game. So it's great to have them, and because we had that group, we qualified for the grant, and the state absolutely loves what we're doing. So that's all good news.
Does Douglas have a representative?
Ken is your representative. Ken Langley? Ken Langley is your representative.
I don't know if it's Ken. I don't know.
Yeah. I believe it's Ken Langley. He agreed to be here for this conversation, but I didn't know we were doing it tonight. So I thought I was going to be in Blackstone, and I...
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. But Ken lost a child. So he's a Douglas resident, he's very open about it. He and his wife have been active participants in the group. You can certainly specify another individual to be on your, you know, your executive board, so to speak. Makes no difference to me, but Ken has been a great help.
Is there any other AG opiates settlements coming down the pipeline?
I think we're done.
Farmers?
They hit them all.
Okay.
They hit everybody from Johnson &amp; Johnson, all the big companies ended up paying rather than going to court. And we're not the only state. We got 930, 930. Other states got over a billion.
Yeah.
I don't know where this money's coming from, but the agreement was that they would pay it over the course of 18 years. So they kind of broke it down. The other thing they did, which is kind of interesting, is they didn't divide up the money by per capita. They divided up the money based on how big a problem you had in your town.
Oh, your district, okay.
So the reason I say that is because Douglas is going to get $345,000 over the course of the next 18 years. Blackstone, who is a similar-sized town, is going to get $45,000.
Wow.
So some of this has to do with when we joined the litigation.
Yep.
And the documentary requirements that we were able to meet at a professional level from our staff here, responding to these incidents, it didn't matter when you joined the lawsuit. So we actually joined the lawsuit before the Commonwealth did. So when the Commonwealth incorporated us into their settlement, I think the terms are a little bit different, so we get a little bit more money in. When the chief came and pitched me on this concept, because we had a large meeting before this materialized, which was kind of all over the place, what it taught us was that we have gaps, right? So we could all just pile Narcan to the ceiling, and it wouldn't cost us a dime, but it's not really helping the problem. So we had to look at all of the social services provided and determine where the community just wasn't being served. And the emphasis on youth was a really important thing to me, attending that meeting and then having this gap analysis done that identified the same issue, that juvenile care is really critical, was winter-winter chicken dinner. I think we were the second or third community to sign up and go forward with the chief. I think this has been very well-handled, chief. It's a super professional job. Thank you for all your effort. This IMA is really boilerplate cooperation agreement. There's not a whole lot of opioid response substance, and it's just how we're going to split up responsibility.
This is a $345,000 goes through.
Right, this is a three-year agreement. Our stream of revenue is 17, 18 years ago. So maybe we'll renew, maybe we'll recast.
Are we putting all our addiction money, so to speak, through this vehicle?
Yes.
In your case, it might even be left over. I don't know. At $2 per capita, I'm not sure what you're getting per year.
Far more than that.
Far more than that. So you're going to have other monies to spend other than the $2 per capita that we're asking for. And once again, you know, I know Uxbridge is planning on contributing more than $2 per capita, just because we're in the same boat. We were early adopters, and we're having more money. And, you know, what I'm terribly concerned about is that towns that have no mechanism are going to end up spending this money incorrectly. So somebody's going to go out and try to buy a police car.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I see the writing on the wall, and then five years from now, there's going to be an audit.
Yeah.
I'm kind of split. First of all, to me, that pot of money is for the select board to determine what to do with. It's not on our authority here in the office. So this conversation will continue to evolve. I've been trying to find a way to leverage some of this funding with the school department. You know, a child that's been exposed in utero to any opioid-based substance will probably need some form of therapeutic classroom.
Yep.
And that's an incredibly expensive adventure. So I'm trying to get traction with the school committee and the school department to see where the opportunities might be to support a salary or support a specific classroom approach to individual kids that are completely innocent, but have major life issues resulting from mom's choice. And for now, this is our best vehicle, and I would respectfully request...
All right. Intertinent motion to authorize the town administrator to sign into the agreement with the Blackstone Valley Opiates Task Force.
Still move?
Motion by Hal. Can we hear a second? Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Before you leave, chief, is this your...
Myself and the Worcester County Sheriff got together and decided there was no efficient task force in the region, and we decided to start it together, and I've been running it since.
Thank you for doing it.
Yeah.
It's encouraging to see a proactive approach to this problem. Everybody in the room knows somebody that's been affected by this, whether it's personal or... That the town administration has invited, I can attest to it, doesn't help the problem. It's a proactive approach, and it's like a native person.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I spent 25 years trying to arrest my way out of this problem. It isn't working. We have to try something else. There are lives at stake here.
Agreed. Thanks, chief, for working on this.
Thank you all so much for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Jump back up to number eight, the Mitza Palady Light Plan Discussion.
This one's not it. Kind of thing, right?
It's a placeholder.
It's a placeholder. I think, you know, Bob and I are talking to an outfit that wants to work with the town to develop industrial opportunities that, interestingly enough, blend concepts of cogeneration with greenhouses that do not grow cannabis, they grow vegetables and leafy stuff. But it's an incredibly efficient setup, and the scope of the power generation is significantly lower than other options that we've discussed with the board previously. There might still be a data center concept that would be involved with it, to be the off-taker. What a lot of people get excited about with Douglas being willing to pursue the formation of a municipal light company is that those muni-light companies are regulated differently, and in some cases, not regulated at all. So if you work with a developer, obviously, we have to get all the necessary permitting, but the same level of scrutiny for energy facility siting conversation evaporates somewhat. And one of the reasons why we are pursuing this is because it becomes an alternative source of revenue, but also an alternative... source of revenue but also an alternative source of municipal independence. And frankly, any conversation about hazmat or Sem for today's modern era has to confront the fact that if we electrify the universe because we think we need to, and then the electricity either wavers or goes down completely, you are in a world of hurt because you have made everybody put all their assets into an electrified universe. In that instance, if we have independent sources of power that can at least distribute a minimal amount of power to our emergency response capabilities or our schools or whatever it is that we're going to tie in as an off-taker, I believe it is a prudent thing to pursue. So we're continuing, we're trying to get the right people to talk to us. It's a chicken or egg problem, right? We need a well-conceived plan to get the detail-oriented folks who work in this industry to pay attention to what we're saying, because we can't just give them a blank canvas. They're not going to fill it in for us. And at the same time, we need their advice to understand how to scrutinize the proposals we're getting. So we're still trying to figure out.
We're reaching out to a very reputable company, right?
We're doing everything at the same time, parallel tracking all the conversations.
Well, I appreciate the update. I know it doesn't happen overnight, right? So it's a work in progress, so we just continue tracking and go forward, you know, as it's worthwhile. All right. That's it?
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Move forward onto the animal regulations discussion. Open it up.
You put it on, that's all I get what you want to talk about.
It's from my last meeting. You're up in the air on whether you want to discuss moving forward with this as a bylaw or a reg. I think you're looking for a direction.
I asked a direct question, but we're not. Bylaw or regulation or a combination of both. So I guess if that's what it is. So I had asked the what health or sample questions and complaints that they got, so then you could see.
There you go.
It says do not move.
Well, I'm obligated to move.
She wasn't picking you up.
Anyways, so that's a sample of the questions and complaints that the Board of Health has to deal with, right? It's not a complete list by any means, but it gives you an idea of what they're challenged with. And they're really basic, right? But they have zero answers for any of them. So Board of Health has started a subcommittee, which everybody's aware of, because I brought that up. There's one member of the subcommittee here with us tonight, which is Jessica. She's a vice chairperson of that subcommittee. The rest is my traveling audience that they come. Everybody on the committee, as well as the people of the audience, are passionate about this, trying to come up with something that's reasonable, that works for everybody, whether it's a property owner or an animal owner. The goal of the committee is to try to come up with something that protects both the animal rights, animal owners' rights, as well as the property owners that don't have any animals, right? So how do we do that? I don't know. That's still up in the air. We're working on it. So we're back to the regular question, which was asked, I think Fred Fontaine asked the question, is this going to be a bylaw? And so, well, I'll try to get the answer, which I did, and I still don't have the answer. So talking with the town administrator, it could be as simple as having a very vague, basic bylaw, which will give you the vehicle in which to make the regulation on Board of Health level. So that's what I'm looking for, so I don't know what you want to do with it.
It seems like there's obviously three stakeholders. There's the animals, their welfare, there's the owners wanting to do things with their property, and there's the butters.
Yep.
So this is something that should come before the town meeting when it's ready. I think it's significant enough. And I favor what you outlined, sort of general statements in the bylaw. And rather than, you know, specific number of chickens you can have here and see how that works out, rather than to have, you know, 20 pages of regulations.
Right. Well, for the benefit, sorry, for the benefit of my traveling audience, the danger of making a too-involved bylaw is you're going to wait six to 12 months to try to change it. And it has to go to the attorney generals to get approved before you can adopt it. If you have a vague bylaw that just outlines whether it's health and welfare, the animals and rodent protection, right? Infestation, right? Just a screwy example, but basically like that. Then you make your regulation. You can change that without waiting the six to 12 months and getting the attorney general's approval on the regulation itself. And I don't think it has to be as involved in it where, like Rich said about the master plan committee, we only have seven, but we're still trying to juggle our ideas and try to get it on the same page. The seven sit at the table and we have typically a half dozen or more in the audience in trying to get a joint consensus as to what to come up with. It's a moving target. It's moving around, a little frustration and confusion, but we'll get there eventually. It's just a process.
Seems if you adopt it to the general language and then see how it was administered, and then if there was a problem, then if you needed to go to detail to see how that works out.
Yeah. The biggest challenge is the Board of Health, they'll get a call, whether it's from a realtor or a potential buyer or something. I'm looking at a property on Franklin Street. It's two acres of land. What can I have on it? We don't have any regulation, right? So now they come in and it's not out of neglect or trying to be malicious. It's they just think it's okay and they end up with a lot more than they need and they move in next to your house and you're not really too keen on having that there, but there's nothing that the town can do when a complaint gets put in, right? There's no way to even handle it.
Well, it could be under the general, you know, the discretion of the board as to it's unfair to the animals to have, let's say, 50 chickens in a half acre loss plot, okay? So some things are obvious and could be covered by the general.
What's obvious to you and what's obvious to me is two different things. And the problem is, is if you don't have something to refer to, it's up to a opinion, right? So you think you can have 50, I think you can have 200, he thinks you can have six. So what's the answer? And that's where the problem comes in.
Yeah, it also depends. So many other variables. Anyway, let's maybe start with the general.
No, but it's a good discussion and these people are used to it, so we do this every two weeks, right? So we go back and forth trying to get a handle on it. And I like the extra input because it gives us another thought process.
I think that, you know, we learned a lot when we did the Stormwater bylaw, where we wrote the definitions that was in the bylaw and those same definitions get carried over to the regs. So there's, you know, and that's to go forward. So I think, you know, something like this with the bylaw and the input for the town administrator kind of helped the general, you know, bylaw if you're going to do that. But the regs is really where everything is, you know what I mean, from there, so.
My overall thought is to come up with something basic and that you can add or subtract to, right? If you get too crazy with it, then A, it's not going to pass and you're going to make a lot of mistakes because you're going to have things in there that don't work, right? So it's, you got to be careful how you go about it.
Ross, anything else to add?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's a two-sided coin. It's to protect, you know, your landowner, property owner, a butter or whatever you want to call it, and the animal owner. You need something to go by, like you say. If there weren't speeding laws and people flying through town, how could a cop pull somebody over? There's no speed limit, there's no... So something's got to be in writing. And I agree with Mike that the bylaw should be basic and probably address regulations as things occur. It's new, it's going to be, you know, there's going to be all different directions to come from, but something's going to be, you know, in writing.
Yeah, so it looks like it's going to be, you know, mainly a Board of Health bylaw and then Board of Health regulations underneath them.
I would think. I haven't had the opportunity to go to the Board of Health to find out what their direction And I've explained it to the committee as well as the people of the audience. Board of Health can just take everything that we do and throw it away. They don't even have to look at it. No, but just to understand that going into it, you can get too personal, wrapped up into it and get offended real quick if you don't recognize that, right? So they can either accept it, reject it, or use part of it, right? So all we're doing is trying to take a task from them and focus on that one thing and try to give them some good information to work on. That's all we're trying to do.
I do favor town meeting action because some of these could be significant restrictions on people's use of their property. So even though there's a delay, if you want to go more detailed, let the town meeting vote at where everybody has a chance to speak for or against it.
No, that's fine. But all I, just cautioning, let's be clear about it and be transparent. I got 5.6 acres of land, I got three horses. I am not affected by any bylaw or rule that we come up with, right? So I'm not emotionally geared towards trying to massage it either way, right? I'm trying to come and try and, I volunteered to help to see if we could come up with something that makes sense for everybody, right? It might have been a poor decision on my part, but I did it anyways and I'll see the job through. The thing I caution you about with the putting it too much into it for town meeting, it's going to take you too long to try to correct it if you screw up. If it's a basic thing, a basic outline, that you can do a regulation, you can easily change that. And if I'm wrong, Mr. Administrator, correct me.
No, that's similar to what we did with the Stormwater bylaw, where it was an outline and then the regs would be the, really, the key framework and stuff like that. And then the overseeing, in this case, the overseeing board of authority, where Stormwater was the planning board, in this case, it'd be the Board of Health.
Yeah. Even the Stormwater bylaw was a lot more involved than I even anticipated this being because you're regulated by the state government in order to address a lot of that stuff, so.
This isn't a public hearing and stuff like that, but trying to think, real quick, what's any question?
Should I approach or...
No, if you get a question.
Speaker's right, I'll just name an address.
Name an address.
Jessica Diamond, East Street. I'm the vice chair. I sit on the animal regulations subcommittee. The concern, I think, which was brought before you was the question from the audience, different citizens who've expressed concern over whether it will be a bylaw that is voted on at town meeting, which was initially the impression that the Board of Health gave at various meetings all the way up through a year ago, or whether it will be a regulation which they will, the Board of Health would institute themselves. That was the question that we were hoping for an answer to, just to kind of quell the anxiety and concerns that, because I feel concerned that folks, most folks are still unaware that this is happening. There's been a core group who have come to every meeting. There's a Facebook group of animal rights folks, but I think largely folks in town are unaware that this is happening and if it was a regulation put in place by the Board of Health, in a way, it's passing under, you know, getting the general consensus. There hasn't been a poll of the town, what people feel about it. There's also been brought up the idea of forming an agricultural commission and a right-to-farm bylaw, which would be a bit different than regulations. Would you be able to clarify what you were saying about the storm being a bylaw and then a regulation? How would that work?
So the way it works is you have a bylaw that basically has the definitions and some understanding of the Board of, you know, Authority and some outlines from there. And that's the bylaw piece of it. But the regulations is really where the meat and potatoes is and, you know, related to review fees and stuff like that. And that's going to, would be oversaw with the planning board once it's drafted, whenever it's going to be in place, but that was the outline. But it gives the town, the bylaw going before the town gives the town voters a chance to vote on it and stuff like that versus a elected or appointed board, such as the planning board in this case is elected and the Board of Health is appointed. So just in that particular case, was just a concern of being able to have a chance for the citizens to weigh in on it at a town meeting, because if the bylaw would be the first step. But they can be written in parallel and stuff like that. It all depends on the committee that Mike is overseeing and working with and getting feedback. But the regs and bylaw can kind of be written hand to hand and stuff like that, so. I appreciate your time. Anything else to add, Mike? We're good?
Yeah, I don't have anything else.
I don't know. Okay. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to move forward. We'll move forward to number 10. This is the town-owned properties and vacant properties. I just threw this on the agenda for discussion purposes. I thought it'd be worthwhile to maybe get our buildings and facilities folks to see if we've got all the properties and see, you know, what their view is on ones that we would want to update or maintain or get their view on it. That's all. That's the reason why I kind of put this on the agenda.
So 11 Ono Road, that went up for a public auction.
Yeah.
And that got pulled because there was an issue with the oil tank in the basement. 29 Gleason Court is the grammar school, right?
11.
Oh, 11?
Yeah.
What's at 21?
Typo.
All right. So whoever lives at 21, disregard this. So 11 Gleason Court.
They could be the primary school.
11 Gleason Court is on the RFP that Matt has prepared and is in the process of moving it. 19 Main Street, that's the Duhamel House, the Brown House?
Yeah.
Okay. And 21 is the VFW. So the Brown House, the Duhamel House, whatever we want to refer to it as, is on the capital committee process by the capital committee bylaw that was passed. Anything that exceeds $10,000 goes through the capital process, but then the BFCC, anything that exceeds $50,000 goes through them. So it is on the capital list, but there's always something that's urgent or that's at the top. It just hasn't reached a point where that's become a top priority. The, and I'm just going to give you the mentality of the capital process when we're going through that. When we're looking at spending that's on the list for $70,000 because it's got asbestos on the exterior, that number might be a little light if we're going into prevailing wage. Depends, we can get creative. I've talked to the administrator enough times trying to figure out how we can go around different ways of getting past this prevailing wage, whether we do stuff in-house or whatever. Just trying to get creative. He knows how to buy things, I know how to build stuff, right? So between the two of us, we have these conversations. But from a capital standpoint, when we're talking about that, we're also looking at facilities and things like that that really need urgent attention. This being one of them, right? This has been a high priority on my personal list since 2016, when they tried to expand upstairs and found out that it was a use change and they couldn't go upstairs, right? So I've been trying to figure out how we can get sprinklers up there and all this other foolishness, which hopefully after the summer we'll have one step closer to achieving that because they're going to outgrow this space. But the space that is being used, if you pay close attention, you go into our selectman's office, be careful walking around the table, you'll trip on the wrinkles. You go over towards the town administrator's door. Every month, as though I walk in, take my pocket knife out and I cut the long thread on so he doesn't tie it around his ankles and fall up the stairs. You go in Gene's office, it's got duct tape on it. It's just, the list goes on and on. The value of the floor covering in this building is $75,000 on the capital list. If it's accurate or not, I have no idea. That's been on there for a couple of years, so. And there's, I could go on and on with the capital thing, but that's the mentality, how we go about it, so. I know there's been some... I know there's been some discussion about tearing down the Brown House, Duhamel House, however we wanna refer to it. I know over the last couple of years, the, because it's been on our list, the cemetery commission has expressed keeping the little glass greenhouse or whatever there because they have their monuments and stuff and trying to use it for storage. They also expressed interest in trying to put up some sort of shed over there for, for storage. I know that it surfaced about the potentially creating a parking area for the town common. The, that is gonna be a little more involved project because even if you tore down the house, you gotta bring material in, obviously, and we probably find dirt around here, but to create the parking lot, then you're gonna direct the people go up the sidewalk and go to a crosswalk to nowhere. It goes to an intersection. There's no sidewalks over there. They're gonna, there's gonna have to be some sort of traffic control. You're gonna actually have to stop traffic. You have to put a light there to push a button. Otherwise, somebody trying to go across the street's gonna get taken out. So these are just things. It's not trying to be an obstacle to it, but we have to recognize the whole picture of the, of the project in order to make it a viable project. So if it's something you're considering, whether it goes through the BFCC process or goes through capital, that would be something that I would urge you to pursue and try to get it onto the list, right? The school committee has a ton of things that are on their list year after year. Sometimes they get frustrated and they just find a way to fix this stuff because they just don't get it from us, right?
Yep. No, I was, I was thinking also the old, the old fire station and stuff like that and seeing, should just kind of look between that and the old VFW to figure out, you know, you know, saving the building or doing something with, you know, figuring out what the idea with the, what's the view is from the building and facilities folks on that. That's all. Just to get them to weigh in on, like a yearly update to say, hey, you know, they would love to do something or they wanna do something, you know, they feel this way, you know, get their senses. That's all.
Yeah.
Nothing more than that.
And some casual conversations about the VFW as to, can we use that for something else? It is a historical little building, even though we don't have a technically a historical district or anything like that, so we don't have to worry about being on the register. But there's people that are still mowing the grass that went there, right?
Are we heating that place too, that building?
No.
No.
So it stays?
It's just empty.
Okay.
But it's, we toured that thing, what, a year ago or so? It's kind of, still kind of a neat little building, trying to, and I've talked to the administrator as a, what can we do? Can we, can we make some sort of way to get in there, right? And he's had some ideas as well. It's a shame to waste that little building because we have different needs.
That's all.
Different needs around town, whether.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm just saying, again, you never know down the road if there's a benefactor or someone like that that comes along and that wants to help the town in repurposing it or updating it and stuff like that, especially the old fire station, the history on that, the old fire station, that was.
What was the tower used for?
Restored.
That was the air tower. That was the, get everybody to the fire station. It was the.
Before that, it was, they used to go watch for planes in World War II.
Yep.
Civil Defense.
Exactly. 12 noon.
Right in your bedroom.
12 noon, baby. If you didn't get up Saturday, that surely didn't wake you up. That's only when the daylight savings happened. He used to go off, all times.
There was a button in the old police.
But getting back to these other things like that, 11 Ono Road, it had, an issue came up during the auction, so it got pulled from the auction.
Yep.
But it's pennies, right?
Yeah.
We need pennies in order to, to circle back and that kind of, unless you drive down the road, you forget that it's even there.
Yep.
It's actually, there was a lot of demand for that lot and the price offered was six digits plus. Everybody has a different philosophy. I don't believe in avoiding difficult situations or choices and kicking the can down the road won't change the status of the issue.
Just makes it more expensive.
There was a very small, very small oil tank that was really just there for, you know, basically a space heater type arrangement, because it wasn't really a permanent year-round residence. And so to walk away from that potential revenue to the town, we'll never use this property for municipal purpose.
No.
Because we're a little bit afraid that somebody may have spilled a couple of gallons of diesel back in the day, to me is irrational and we need to remove what's left of the structure that has collapsed, raise all of the vegetation that has grown up there, do some soil samples, be responsible landowners. If it comes back that it's not contaminated, sell it to one of the abutters, all the abutters desperately want it, and be done with it. Because it's a silly thing, but we all have to live with the fact that if the town owns it and somebody gets hurt there.
Yep.
You have a liability. And we, in this most recent round of recasting our insurance coverages, discovered that two of our buildings didn't even have a liability attachment to it, which we rectified.
Yep.
So now everything really don't have a lot of replacement value or value to the town. The issue is, they all should have liability coverage.
Yep.
That's there, but it costs money.
Yep.
So make those costs go away. It's not a ton of money, but over the course of 10 years it is.
Yep.
And lend some efficiency and some thoughtfulness to how we manage some of our more popular programs. You know, really, the council on aging, I think in all fairness, would tell you that they've outgrown the senior center, that the popularity of the programs and when we have larger events, there isn't enough room in there for everybody who wants to gather to gather. And that's actually a sign of a healthy community. People wanna be together.
Yep.
And having the bus means more Douglas residents are taking advantage of the Douglas Adult Social Center because before they may not have wanted to go out on a day like today when it was raining or whatnot and drive around, but now they're getting that service provided to them so they can come enjoy the center. So it needs a bigger place to be, a bigger footprint with, you know, a different arrangement for parking and access than we have.
CFW suitable or all?
That's what the thought process is. We also have, the library has programs that they've outgrown their building. And it's very difficult, as we all know, following the conversation over the last several years, to make rehabs to a library building using the grant.
Yeah.
Method because the grants have a million strings attached. They're very competitive. We try to get points. We have to jump through all kinds of crazy hoops that really don't fit this community. There's just not support for it. So it's getting a little bit silly. So if we had more space, well, the senior center isn't that active at night, but you might have kids' reading room and reading programs and it could all be utilized the same way.
Correct.
But that all takes resources, so that's, one of the things that Selectman Fitzpatrick's brought up several times is we have a limited capital budget and we have far more capital requests than we have budget to meet them. And I may be the only person who feels this way, but I'll put my thoughts on the table. The capital committee is formed by bylaw. The authority of the capital committee is established there. The authority of the building facilities committee is also established by bylaw. And so the select board and town administrator must follow those bylaws. Having said that, I think that when it comes to the decision-making rubric that is used by the capital committee is a policy. And the chief policymaking board of the town is the select board. If you were to select a project and put it as a freestanding measure on the warrant, I think you have the prerogative to do that. The capital committee may oppose you because you're chasing after their resources that they've been given by bylaw. So there's that.
Oh, yeah.
In any town, you're gonna have these institutional questions. Whose authority ends and where does somebody else's authority begin? You're always safe if you assume that so long as the select board is the chief policymaking board of the town, you control things like the board of health, which in this town is appointed by you, the capital committee, which is mostly appointed by you, BFCC, which is mostly appointed by you.
Yep.
So since all roads lead back to the select board, if you really wanted to move something up on the list, you could have a freestanding measure to do that. I don't know that I would encourage that because I think it sets up.
Yeah, I think.
That doesn't need to be there. I think what really needs to be done is the project needs to score high enough to make the funding criteria. In the alternative, we need to get enough one-time revenues in the door to support a bigger budget for capital and then those lower things on the list will get funded.
Fair enough.
So unless you can identify a significant health or safety threat, it just hasn't made the grade.
Yep.
Because the things that we are buying, the capital budget we have, are things that are essential to providing basic services to the people.
Yep. Okay. Moving forward, item 11, the Wallen Lake Park and Wallen Lake Road discussion, possible votes. Sorry, I put this on here, the agenda is, because I was in that area, we're going, turning down Wallen Lake Road and just want, there's probably, we have this almost every year, every so many years, it becomes clear that the trash headed towards, out the window trash and stuff like that. So what I was looking for was just to see if the board would entertain possible sending a letter to DCR to ask them to kinda clean up the roadway, the property that they own. I don't know, Mike, have you had a chance to drive in that area at all?
No, but DCR was out there this week, I mean, they came down Cedar Street and they cleaned up the Two Islands, put mulch there.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've gone there recently. They might have cleaned it up.
Okay. I'll take a gander through that. I know they were doing the weed whacking and some mulching, but it was a trip with the trash, but just for discussion purposes, that's the reason why. It's just kind of, they own that strip and that area and we get people that do a lot of hiking and traveling and, but it seems like sometimes people visiting the state park kinda don't throw away their stuff in the correct way, so.
Don't take out what they take in.
Yeah, so.
They take it out, they just throw it out.
By itself, it's private property.
Yeah, yeah. And people's private property. So I'll take a gander and if we gotta revisit it, we'll revisit it from there. All right, item 12, so the Blackstone Valley Selectman Workshop Discussion. So I had a conversation with one of the selectmen in Millbury and they are interested in setting up and probably send out a letter regarding hosting a selectman from each town to kind of have a discussion of like what works great in their community, what, what things that they are working towards. And it's just a sharing of ideas and stuff like that. So I just wanted to have this for the discussion purposes, so we can, at some point, send one of us to it. I'm not sure if it's gonna be a monthly or quarterly event, but I think it's always worthwhile sharing things that we're proud of and things that we're looking to do, you know, such, and what their, what their challenges are. It's a good way of sharing information from multiple communities, so I thought there was a benefit of it.
You just opened a discussion? You're looking to delegate somebody this evening?
I think just open, just for discussion purposes. I'm gonna wait for the letter.
Because it's been a customary ritual that anybody that's not in attendance typically gets appointed to the committee, so I would nominate Tim to be the appointee if you're looking for somebody.
Yeah, I think we'll just, we'll discuss it here from there. I just wanted to give the outlines because I thought it was, you know, having the conversation.
But I don't mind if you wanna do it tonight, if you want.
We could, we could hold off. I don't think, I think they're looking to do it sometime in July.
Table my motion.
We'll table it for now.
Any idea what the, what the area towns would be?
So Millbury, Oxbridge, Sutton, North Bridge, they may expand it from there. I think it's just open, like what challenges they face, what things they've done, you know what I mean? I think it's, it's open discussion, thoughtful of ideas and stuff like that. There's things that, you know, we've done that I'm, I'm proud of, that we've done and that, you know, we can share. And there's things that maybe we're like, hey, we need to work on something and they might have a, something they've already worked on that we could leverage, just to get the ball rolling. It's a thought of ideas and that's it. I think it's beneficial. I think there's some things that come down from Boston that kind of irks us and we're the forgotten towns or communities and stuff like that, and this might be a way of, you know, unifying. Yeah, that situation, so. I think there's only positives out of the whole thing. It's a workshop, it's not a commitment and stuff like that. It's just a way of discussing things. That's all. Nothing too crazy from there, but. All right, moving forward, standard line 13, Board of Selectmen Meeting, Time Change, Discussion, Possible Votes.
Tim had requested this be on, so I don't know if you want to table someone who's here or if you want to just.
Yeah, I think we should do. I would at least like to discuss it, you know.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can discuss it. What's the thoughts?
I would just soon keep it at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a time constraint for me. I do work during the day.
Okay.
I think 7 is a good time.
Yeah.
Trying to be here for 6:30 is just gonna be a challenge at home sometimes.
That's fair.
I am sympathetic to the fact that the town administrator lives quite a distance because I try to bring that up during our meetings so we can get somewhat speedy, but even with saying that, moving it up would be a challenge.
That's fair.
It'd be tough. I mean, I work right here in town and it's all I can do to get home, get showered, get something down in my mouth to eat and get here.
I get scheduled projects that are over an hour away that I'm starting very shortly and it's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, no, it's.
To the extent that my interests were brought up, let me be clear, I consider it a cost of doing business.
Yeah.
That in my role, I'm at your disposal, I will stay as late as I need to stay. I appreciate people being thoughtful when there's snowflakes or sleet or something on the radar.
Yeah.
You know, we'll take that on an ad hoc basis, but on Tuesdays, Town Hall is open until 6.
Yep.
So it's not unusual for staff that are gonna be attending select work meetings to grab something to eat before you start at 7. So if we start at 6:30, that, that window will close and there won't be any time, which isn't entirely fair to sit in until 10 o'clock at night with nothing to eat all afternoon. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. I think 7 o'clock gives us a chance to.
Okay.
To like catch our breath and.
Yep.
Keep it alive, but.
Okay.
This is working well and we screw with Hal's schedule.
It's ice cream.
Your clock's not gonna, your clock's not gonna go off.
They should stay open until 11, right? That's the problem.
Seems if you get a common victualist license for ice cream, you should be there till.
Lisa, could you note that, that next time they come in for their license, that it's mandatory that they're open till 11 o'clock on Tuesdays?
Or they create a fast, fast lane for Hal when there's a selectman meeting so he doesn't get stuck in a line?
Maybe they could deliver.
They could deliver, there you go. All right.
It's a special permit, isn't it?
Oh, geez. You're probably right, though, Rob.
We'll just leave it off for now. Yeah, all right. So let's move forward in the interest of time. Number 14, the final review of the annual appointments, possible votes.
I did inquire and all, and there was a couple people that had not replied and Lisa managed to get those answers.
Okay.
They read today, actually, so that was good. I only have two members that do not want to be reappointed. One was on the board of health and the other was the police union rep for the employee insurance advisory committee. They did find a replacement.
Mm-hmm.
Nicholas Zanchi, Zanchi, I'm sorry if I'm butchering that, I probably am. And I did notify the board of health that Mary Ellen would be resigning at their next meeting.
Okay.
All right.
I would make a motion to approve the appointment list as presented because you do have one, one section that, because an RFP has gone out.
Yep.
For potential attainment of land council.
Perfect. All right.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mike, second by Ross. Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, we're gonna skip number 15.
Yeah.
We've taken care of 16. We're good to go and on to the town administrator report.
So on your last topic, we have approached four land use firms. Initial phone interview with them, just introductions. All four expressed an interest in applying. One of them is the incumbent, so they've all been told they have to do the same thing, which is provide us with a firm resume and a cover letter that discloses fees for a longer interview with a staff committee that would generate a report to the select board. So far, only one firm has completed the process. I expect me, Talman and Costa to be, most likely to be the next one that is able to finish it. One firm seems to have dropped off the radar. I might actually reach back out to them because it is something they do with quite a few communities across the Commonwealth. They may have just misplaced their correspondence. And the other one I spoke to Thursday or Friday at some length, I was home. And the other one I spoke to Thursday or Friday at some length, I was home, so it must have been Friday, and I fully anticipate they'll respond with, with an, an application. I think the one thing I would flag for the select board right now is you do need to prepare yourself for some sticker shock. We have very affordable counsel. We've got two firms that are on a flat fee and the firm that we manage very carefully, KPO, is at 300 an hour, so we rarely use them. When we do, it's, we are highly leveraged, right, so we completely frame the question and the evidence, so it's a very efficient conversation because they bill us on a tenth of an hour basis. So, you know.
Six.
Yeah, I signed a warrant today for $84 because I talked to the guy for 18 minutes. That's still really low. So I've known for a long time that we needed to increase the legal budget because frankly, you get what you pay for and if they are paying a staff attorney the draw for typical attorney salary, they need to make that back from their clients. So if you expect to be prioritized when your effective rate is 180 bucks an hour, it ain't happening, guys, and I think that's one of the things we're running into, is that we have a lot of exposure to junior associates and newly recruited, newly minted attorneys because that's what our flat fee gets us. And, you know, I think the one firm that we've interviewed so far would be a really good fit for us on a couple of our most complicated matters and you just need a certain level of proficiency to be able to tackle those things. But they're paying rent for downtown Boston, so if I tell you that it's 650 bucks an hour for a founding partner's time, that's what it is. And it might be discounted 20%, but it's still gonna be over $500 an hour. You have to think about what's important to you, there may be a couple of instances where you want that firm to pick up the case, especially if it's headed towards litigation and handle it for you in an efficient manner, but they're just not willing to be day-to-day counsel. And unfortunately, I kind of snapped at the partner a little bit because he said, he used the word handholding during the interview and I took offense to that. I said, I don't need my hand held, what I need is someone who can be of assistance. So if we draft a notice of violation and it's not a clear cut case and we need a lawyer to say that's gonna be a defensible NOV, then I need you to be able to do that and I don't want to wait three weeks for the response, I don't want to wait three weeks for the decisions. We don't write decisions, we don't practice law, so if you want to have something that will survive on appeal, you've, it's gotta be written by an attorney with a mind towards what it might be litigated. So I, I do think we need that level of service from an attorney and, you know, a suggestion was made, well, go find a retired attorney who might give you six to eight hours a week and, and ride circuit, and that was a very poor thought process there, too. First of all, in my experience, attorneys that can afford to retire aren't terribly interested in part-time gigs. They're gonna be in the Riviera somewhere, enjoying the fact that they used to bill 2,100 hours a year and now they finally get their life back when they're in their 60s or 70s. And so getting that kind of assistance isn't really likely. We also can't necessarily do the school parent, school-aged child-parent arrangement either because that schedule is fixed. Am I picking my bus, am my kids up at the bus stop or am I gonna be in court because the court scheduled the hearing on a motion at 2:00 in the afternoon and is not hearing any excuses for why I can't be there? That rarely happens, judges usually accommodate requests by attorneys, but there is a time and if a clock is ticking, then they have to, a certain amount of time that they have. So I don't think that's a viable option for us either, and I don't think our legal budget would support that anyway. So if you take labor counsel out, general counsel out, you've got about 45, $46,000 a year, a little bit more than that go to land use council, and is that gonna get me a part-time attorney? I don't, I don't know.
Because the other main variable besides the hourly rate is how efficient they are using their time.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I was gonna kind of comment on that, too, because if you're paying $600 an hour for an attorney, it better be a $600 an hour attorney, period. That's the way I look at it.
You know, when you see him, I think a founding partner of a law firm in Boston, there's a level of self-confidence and depth of knowledge that is very obvious in a conversation. It may be slightly obnoxious, too, but it is very obvious when they're really good at what they do.
That makes a good attorney, too, as far as I'm concerned.
And the gentleman is very familiar with Attorney Davis, so he's wanting me to say hello.
Did that destroy him in your mind?
Gregor McGregor from McGregor Legere.
I think it's a good exercise, I mean, what we're doing to take these.
It's a necessary, a necessary exercise because on land use boards, we're not getting the service that we need. It's, it's frustrating and it could be a simple thing that they've never raised the rates to give us, give us the A-team and we're always stuck with the B-team.
Yep.
That's not our fault and they need to address it, maybe they didn't know how to address it, well, it's gonna be addressed now and the goal wasn't to spend more money, which is, that's a necessary evil as the administrator explained, but we need a level of service because it's, it's very frustrating to go to these meetings and not get the support that you need.
Do you visualize the attorney being at all his EBA meetings where there's a presentation?
We don't request them to be at every meeting unless there's a, a real conflict, right? Most of the meetings in the last 12 years, I think we've had 10 or 11 denials, so the rate is, the refusal rate is extremely low, but there's situations where we know it's gonna be a problem and when the worst thing that we can do is go into a conflicting application and have the applicant's attorney there, we have nothing.
Right.
Right, because we're not attorneys and just like this board, anything could come out of our mouths, right? And sometimes it's the wrong thing, right? So we just need good guidance.
You don't need them in every meeting or.
No, no. But when you've got somebody who's armed to the teeth.
Sure thing.
Citing case law, dropping Latin phrases.
Not a clear-cut issue.
Yeah, but it just has a tendency to flatten a board.
Yeah.
If you don't have, even experienced board members, they'll sit there and think, oh, what does that case say? And they'll either postpone their action or they'll make a bad decision, so.
Reminds me of a saying I use at the shop all the time, good, fast, cheap, pick any two.
So that was, that's where we are there. Just a word about this regional discussion with the select board members. We meet as town managers and administrators with some of the same communities. It's like herding cats to get more than three or four people at the Starbucks on any given Friday during the winter and the spring and fall. I would encourage select board members to meet directly with each other. I find a lot of my peers will hide behind the excuse, I don't know that I want to do a regional approach to something, I don't, because I don't know if I can sell it to my select board and the rest of us can just kind of sit there and say, well, I don't know what your relationship is, so I'm not gonna step on your toes.
Yeah.
The policymakers have to meet together and agree they want to do something and then go back and tell their employees what they want. And you'll see some things happen. BVT is one issue. They, so there's a whole group of select board members from all across the BVT catchment area that are supposed to be meeting, they haven't had a meeting yet, they finally got one set up where they had enough people coming and the guy hosting the meeting didn't know how to work Zoom, so the meeting never happened.
Yeah.
So this is where you're at, right? It's, it's really hard to do.
Yep.
But in our small region here with the communities you mentioned, not Douglas, but most of the others are sharing in a private ambulance service contract that may or may not be viable going in the fall. So one of those communities at least is someone we should talk to about having a plan for dispatch eventually, so those issues need to be surfaced at your level.
Yep.
Because, you know, I've tried any number of times to do cooperative stuff. I want to share a contract for tree removal with one of the communities you mentioned and it was like I was speaking upside-down Greek with my peer and I was like, do you understand that if we had enough of trees?
Yep.
Instead of being 2,500 bucks a day, maybe it's 2,300, but there's power in numbers, they'll base a crew here and the crew will do all of our work at the same time, but we're both paying top plate. And it's always comes down to, well, I want them there when I want them and childish selfishness, you've gotta give something up. If you want to be regional and cooperative, you have to give up some of your prerogative and that's just that. And I don't know, sometimes I don't.
No, I think we've been fortunate with the municipality, intermunicipality agreements that we've had, I mean, the ones that have come before us have been really beneficial, so.
Because it's been a clear delegation of authority to someone outside of the immediate staff control, the town administrator or manager, to do something that they know they can't afford to do on their own. We cannot afford to do animal control as a freestanding group, never.
Yep.
Never gonna happen. So those are the things, but we have quite a few things on that list.
Okay.
Where we could all be saving each other a fair amount of money and not getting too far off our skis.
Sounds good.
So the next issue on my radar screen is, I did mention to you some time ago that there was an effort underway to delay the imposition of the electric heavy-duty trucks. And we were supposed to really end those, end purchases of fossil fuel trucks with the model year we're in, which is frankly insanity. So the highway superintendents and public works directors from around the Commonwealth were able to get the administration to put that off for another a year, which is good news, I suppose, but I think it's getting to the point now with the business community and with municipalities, where we're gonna have to push back fairly resolutely on this idea that if you set a goal, you will make it happen simply by legislating it and tapping your foot on the floor impatiently. Maybe that works for you in Boston, I can assure you it doesn't, that an awful lot of the heating plant and transportation and all the rest of what Boston work as a city is fossil-fueled. And the more, no matter how much you try to legislate around it, that's the reality, our future is hybrid, not all-electric. There are places where electric is a brilliant solution and is necessary, heat pumps are one technology that could move us forward in a number of directions. There are other places where it's foolishness. One of those places is plowing snow, putting fires out, chasing bad guys. You've got to be able to sustain your effort over a long period of time. I'm not gonna go out and buy 18 snow plows because I need 12 of them to be plugged in while the other six are working, that is stupid. And there is no community in this Commonwealth that can afford that level of investment in that kind of equipment, the foolishness has to stop. So at some point, we'll all get together and make a professional presentation of the difficulties at hand and if people don't listen to us, need to be set aside because that's not where we're going, it's just never gonna work. I pulled in today early, in the summertime, I try to get here early, you know, a little van pulled in, it was obviously either special education or definitely a special education transfer. It was a little electric van, it made no noise, it probably wasn't gonna drive much more than 10 or 15 miles and that's the stuff we can do. Plug it in during the day when it's not running and in the morning and the afternoon when it's running, that's all the fuel it needs and it's not generating.
Probably like the senior center bus could have been.
Could have been, could have been, would have been.
Yeah.
Even then, you have an issue because you have a lift on there and you're gonna have sufficient.
Some challenges.
Lift always works.
Yeah.
So that's, but that's your update, that did happen and I'm grateful to Adam Ferno for pursuing that.
Appreciate it.
The initial wave of communication from C and O isn't all that we had hoped for. They're supposed to start the 17th, they're out there last week, put in service, completely blew their own schedule, no communication whatsoever, like 24 hours' notice to get a police detail. They appear to be doing good work, they appear to be very efficient, but the reason why they're not out there these last couple of days is they're waiting for test results because they, they test what they've installed to be potable water and then they can get going. So I don't know exactly when they're gonna show up, I can tell you what's next, though. We have a hydrant down on Pleasant and Martin Depot.
Yeah, I know where it is.
No man's land there, where you can easily get hit by a car if you try to cross there because you're not being very smart. But that will be installed first and then we'll be on a, hopefully, a night job over the weekend, we will be in Main Street because there's a hydrant connection there.
Yep.
And the traffic rerouting is cuckoo for that one, it's gonna be, it will be utilizing Pleasant Street, be utilizing Cottage.
Yep.
And it's not exactly the most graceful thing, that's why the work is gonna be done at night.
Yep.
So I authorized the crew to work on Juneteenth because it really isn't a thing for their industry, it's a government thing, so I'm hoping that they get this work done this week and we'll see Depot Street in earnest. Now, the kids are out of school now, so we won't have that obstacle to deal with, but we're still looking for the project to get, once they're in the road here in Depot, we're cautiously optimistic that the digging's gonna be easy and the install's gonna be fast because of, there's already a pipe there, so hopefully we won't hit any problems. We don't have the kind of ledge-out propings we had on North Street with the Gilboa.
But we might have some undiscovered things in Depot Street since the last time it's been dug up.
Yeah, who knows, maybe there's a time capsule.
Yep.
They found two of McCoy. Anyway, that's most of what I've got to say here. In executive section, I'll go into some detail. Do want to account for the use of my time just to be, for people to understand. I'll leave the details out and just go, generally speaking, what is going on with MSHG is that the town of Douglas has a surplus, a documented surplus remaining in the health group and we are working with an attorney along with two communities, Oxford and Akushnet, that have deficits, but it's an interesting dynamic that has arisen because we play off each other in these negotiations with MSHG. My point here is that this has been a tremendous investment of time. So I really spent all day Thursday, all day Friday, part of the day today, it'll be a really good part of the day tomorrow, working with, so we have a pre-meeting, then we meet with the other side and then we have a post-meeting to go over what we found out from the negotiation session that we just had. So everything is like four hours and that's, it's a distraction. So there are some things on my plate that are being set aside because I think we have the opportunity to get all of those funds back and we don't want to walk away from that at all, just because the group's having trouble, they have a legal obligation to honor their commitment to us. So finally, and to that end, on June 30th, our membership in that group will terminate, we'll have the news set up for July 1st, I've signed all the paperwork, took a couple of offensive things out of the program that I don't want to give too many details since I cut them out. This is a really difficult market and I don't anticipate stability for the next couple of years that we've enjoyed for the last four or five. Just, and it's got nothing to do really with our claims or our census or anything else, it has to do with the industry itself.
Yep.
And whether or not the stop-loss carriers in particular fully anticipated and had a plan in place for the extraordinary claims that we're getting from very sick people, very expensive drugs and in some cases, you know, mental health care is very hard to find, when you do find it, it's very expensive for insurance. Those claims are going well over a million bucks, some of them are pressing the boundaries at $2 million bucks. So for the stop-loss carrier, that's, that's a really big hit. And so we're seeing our rates go up, you know, 40% or more as a result, so we are carefully managing that aspect of our program to be affordable, but when I do a budget forecast for next year, I am including a fairly large increase for insurance because I'm anticipating that. I guess that'll be my last comment. Budgeting is year-round. It is every single week, we open the spreadsheet, we look at what's going on and we try to plan ahead. So knowing that, I think we've pretty much figured out what our revenue picture is already, we pretty much know what we've got. We might have some one-time revenues, but that's all gonna go to capital. So where. have some one-time revenues, but that's all going to go to capital. So where I'm at operationally, because of the pressures from the education side, I anticipate another year where we may have to be flat on the municipal side. So to the extent necessary. I don't intend, couple of things. I don't intend to fill vacancies that open up this year unless I have clear sense that the revenue, the ongoing operating revenue would support it. That's not a good place to be because we just put those positions into the budget because they were requested by department heads, approved by FinCom and approved by town meeting as ostensibly necessary. But if we, our commitment is to the people we have. So if somebody leaves to go somewhere else and the budget needs to support the remaining staff having the tools they need to do their job, to repair their equipment, to get new, smaller, less expensive equipment that doesn't qualify as a capital expense, that's, that's going to continue. So if having the extra headcount interferes with that, then we just need to pare back the headcount. There is a point, obviously, which we don't want to go. But that's only one prong of the solution. Another is going to be, I, I have to assert uncomfortable prerogatives of the town administrator's office. I've got to look at where money is going out the door and services are not being rendered in return. And that is not a pleasant conversation. But if we're going to get control of our operating picture going forward, we have to address those issues. And I'm not afraid to go there because I just, we, I, I know what we need to do in a couple of cases. And then lastly, with a new school business manager coming on, we've got to try to be persuasive in our arguments about creative solutions to some of the issues that they have, or maybe having a more rigorous program. So we spend quite a bit of money repairing some systems that maybe it's just time to knock it off and just replace the things.
Yeah, no, no more, no more Band-Aids.
No more Band-Aids. If it's a forty thousand dollar air conditioner and you just spent twenty thousand dollars repairing it, that's foolish. Just bite the bullet and get the, get a new one. And then the other thing is just being creative about school bus transportation. We have to tackle that issue. The town of Sutton's already tackled it. And they already, I think they actually make money providing services to other communities, including this one, where I sign warrants where we pay the town of Sutton to transport a Douglas student. And if that doesn't frost your, your beer mug, it should. I'll leave the rest for executive session, which I anticipate, Mr. Chairman, will be fairly brief, but important.
Perfect. All right. Eighteen, any topics or anticipated in the last forty-eight hours prior to the meeting? Nothing? All right, forward. Intended motion to move into executive session?
I'll make a motion to enter executive session for a potential litigation with MSHG and Shore Road and then to reconvene into open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Motion by Ross.
Second.
Second by Hal. All in favor?
Aye.